...town blog guy, and this is our first of two V town blog candidate forums. The next one is next Tuesday night, so hope to see everyone in fact again then. So that will actually be featured, the other four candidates running for Buren City Council. So just go over some housekeeping here. Around 8:30 or so, maybe 8:25, we will turn to the audience for questions. So start thinking of questions you want to ask the candidates. And when we do, we want you to direct your question to all four candidates to answer. Keep your question in the form of a question. And if your topic has already been covered by the time the mic comes to you, that will be this microphone, please cover a new and different topic. Now, as we have done in the past, well first I want to acknowledge Mark Newman. Mark put this all together, he does a great job. Thank you, Mark. Mark came up with this crazy idea called the purple card option. Each of the candidates has a purple three by five. And they, during the forum, once all four candidates have finished answering a question, any candidate can hold up their purple card as a form of a challenge. The moderator will then call on that candidate, and he or she is then allowed 20 extra seconds to add to or follow up on their own answer or another candidate's answer. Each candidate can use their purple card twice during the entire evening. The purple card rule does not apply to the opening or closing statements. Now, your moderator tonight is Nancy Warren. Wave Nancy. As a Des Moines resident since 1995, Nancy is a native of the great state of Washington. She has worked for Highline Community College since 1999 as manager for instruction. She collaborates with her husband, Dr. T.M. Sell, as business manager, Breeders Theater. Breeders Theater performed at EB Flut Winery. Some of you may recall, there are great shows over there in the cold winery. They did it there for 10 years, and Nancy would like to let you know that Breeders Theater will be performing at the end of October and early November with a show called Blood Poopin' at the Des Moines Beach Park Auditorium, which, yes, has heat. I will turn it over to Nancy now. Thank you.
Yes, Des Moines has heat, and you can drink the water. Sorry. I'm delighted to be here tonight, and I'd like to introduce our panelists. My gentleman to my left, we have Jack Main. Jack has been a daily and weekly newspaper editor for four decades, spending the last four years as a contributor to various newspapers and news blogs, including the V Town Blog and the Waterland Blog. He's a former bureau chief for the Associated Press, a city editor at the Seattle Post, Intelligencer, and the Arizona Republic newspaper in Phoenix. Jack once interviewed Nelson Mandela in person, and he remembers darn well what a typewriter was. My students do not. They have no idea. And then I am also pleased to introduce Arun Javari. Arun is the first mayor of the city of Buren, serving in that office for more than five years. He's an author, a physicist, and a mechanical engineer. Arun Javari earned his doctorate in educational leadership from Seattle University, and early on worked for Boeing on the development of the 727, 737, and the 747 aircrafts. He's the recipient of the 2012 Association of Energy Engineers Regional Renewable Energy Innovative Award. Let's all say that together fast. Arun keeps in shape by swimming almost every day. Welcome, Arun. And we wouldn't have a forum if we didn't have candidates, so I would like to just draw your attention to our candidates to my right. We have Joan McGilton on the far end of the table, Debbie Wagner, Rose Clark, and Nancy Tosta. So at this point, I would like to have us begin with our opening statement, and we will start with Joan. For the opening statement, we will go in the order that I just introduced them. However, when we do the closing statements, we will go in the reverse order. I would like to also draw your attention to our timekeeper in front of us with big black print. That's good, I can see that, and I hope that you can too. So I'll be mindful of the time. People tell you when your time is about finished. Please try to wrap up your comments at that point. If not, then I will wrap them up for you. You might not like what I say. So let's begin with Joan.
Thank you. It's interesting that it's 1 minute and 15 seconds. I think that's very precise, and I appreciate it. I've been on Buren City Council for 12 years. I'm finishing up my third term and a candidate for the fourth. I'm getting a lot of questions about why would I do this again? It's been a challenge, definitely. The last two years has been challenging, is the kind word for this. But we've made some major changes. We're now looking for a new city manager, and all I see is the community is coming together, many more interested citizens than we've had in the past, a good collection of advisory board members, several ad hoc communities that come together that give advice to the city. I'm very excited about the apartments in Town Square and the fact that we're looking to develop the property on the northeast side of the city that hasn't been used very effectively because of some poor criteria. So I'm very happy with everything we're doing, and I think another four years will be even better than the 12 years I've had so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Debbie?
Hi, I'd like to thank the blog for having this forum, and I'd like to thank the moderator and welcome everybody. It's clear to me that the voters want a change in Buren. I'm ready to work hard to make those changes a reality. Public safety, business revitalization, economic development, Town Square, the budget deficit, among others, are my concerns, are things to work on. I believe Buren residents value its neighborhoods, parks, and environment, and so do I. As a volunteer member of a community symphony and a parent, I will make inroads to improve arts and recreational opportunities in the city. I have 35 years of business experience in accounting and financial management, 25 years of community service, and schools volunteer. I co-founded and am vice president of a national environmental organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. And Rose?
Thank you. I too want to thank the V Town Blog for hosting, and I want to thank all of you for being here. I think it's very important for the voters to be able to see the candidates in person. I have been, I am winding up my third term on council, and people have asked, well, one guy did ask you, just said, oh, I'm sorry. And I said, sometimes I am too, but most of the time I really do enjoy working on the council. I have been a citizen of Buren since 1966. I've raised my children, my grandchildren. Someday, I want to have great-grandchildren here. It's a wonderful community full of very wonderful people. That is a pleasure to serve. I have been working with a group I co-founded called the Highline Communities Coalition. We are, we are the ones that did the healthy eating, active living, trying to make our community offer healthier amenities. We are currently working with JUA to open up our schools and our cities for joint use. And I want to complete that, and I'm ready to move on. So thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Rose. And Nancy?
Hi all, I'm Nancy Tosta, and I wanted to put a slightly different spin on this. McKinsey recently did an analysis of what makes a city great, and they said you need to grow smart, where you integrate environmental thinking and infrastructure. You need to ensure prosperity for all residents. You need to cooperate regionally to leverage resources. You need to do more with less. You do that by exploring partnerships and by embracing technology. And you, third, you win support for change, and you do that by building a high-performing team of civil servants. You require accountability for actions, and you create consensus among staff and the community and businesses. My four areas of focus for Buren would be that we ensure community inclusivity, that we need to engage residents in more ways to create the vision for the community, the great city we want Buren to be. We need to develop our economy through residential business development. That creates the budget that we have for Buren. We need to support the arts, so we have a community of creativity. We need to protect our environment, and I will do this by bringing leadership to our council based on knowledge of policy, science, the arts, understanding issues in Buren, and my skills of listening and facilitating.
Thank you, Nancy. At this point, we are going to go to our panelists, and they will be asking questions of the candidates. It will be the same question for all candidates. You have, again, this 75 seconds, the 1 minute 15 seconds for your answer. The first question, we will start with Joan, work our way down. Then the second question, then we'll start with Debbie, then we'll do a rolling start. Ready to go? And so we would like to have Jack ask the first question.
As you have just selected the SGR firm out of Texas to search for a new city manager, I guess I would like to know if you have some special requirements that you're going to ask that search term to use to find the new city manager? And what are your general strategic goals in hiring this new person to lead the city administratively?
I looked at the three proposals that city staff brought forward. Edge Chapi does an amazing job of screening so that we have the right candidates to look at. It was SGR Waters, also out of Texas, and then a local firm, Portman. I read their proposals. I also looked very carefully at the brochures they produce in order to solicit candidates. It was very interesting. Every single firm said the same thing. We want the most highly qualified, broad-based city manager candidate that we can find nationwide. I objected to the broad brush approach. What I want from the firm that we selected is to come to Buren, interview council candidates, and really get a feel for what Buren's issues are. I think there's three or four things that have risen to the top that this search firm had better understand completely. I don't want something off the shelf that they use for all city managers. I want the work that SGR does to be very, very focused on this community and the needs that we will express.
Thank you, Joan. Debbie?
Actually, SGR wasn't my choice. I went to the presentation that was given by each firm at the council meeting. It was open to the public, but the public did not really have any input into who was chosen. I liked the firm Waters, and I liked them because they had a good ethics, a focus on ethics, that they were going to administer to any candidate. I think that the next person that we have needs to be an honest person who has integrity, who will work with our groups, our organizations, our economic development partnership, and other citizen input that goes on in the city, to have a collaborative management style. Instead of running the city from the top down, run it from the bottom up with citizen input being a primary focus, rather than something that's not listened to or considered in decision-making. I believe that person should be well-qualified, have a great recommendation in coming from where he's, he or she has been at, and be able to manage a budget that's in a structural deficit, and bring our city some business, new business, as well as retaining the business that we have.
Thanks, Debbie. Rose?
Thank you. My vision of how the process is going to go is that the SGR will come here and will visit with council members and learn what council members think about the community, what our problems are, what the concerns are, and then open it up to candidates, as well as many public meetings that will include our advisory boards and citizens, so that this firm can get a real good understanding of what our community is really like from everybody that wishes to participate. He can't find a good fit for Buren if SGR can't find that good fit if they don't understand us collectively as a community. So with those marching orders from us all together, I think we will be able to find a good, strong candidate that manages staff well, that works and listens well with council and with the community. We have four advisory boards. I would like to add another advisory board of young people, which has that voice we're not hearing. So that would be another voice that I think you should hear. My time is up.
Thanks, Rose. Nancy?
I think in terms of the process we might think about SGR using, Shoreline is in the midst of hiring a city manager, and one of the things they did is they reached out to the community and said, what are the qualifications you'd want to see in city manager? And I think that's something we should definitely do in Buren. And along those same lines, I think we should ask, why would a city manager come to Buren? Let the residents talk about what it is about the community that they like, that they appreciate, why they think it's a great place to live, and help whoever the potential candidates might be understand sort of that depth of feeling of what's, what it is here in Buren that makes us all like living here. I do think it should be a nationwide search. There was some discussion about focusing on the northwest, but I think we need to go for the best and the brightest out there. And then I think once the candidates have been sort of vetted by the search firm, by SGR, that they should be brought in for some public meetings, that the public needs to meet these candidates, needs to be able to talk to them, and that this happens over a period of several hours, not just sort of 15-minute exposure.
Thank you. Arun?
My question has to do with city governments, assuming that you hire a qualified city manager. Can you...
Is the question to me? The question is for the entire...
Yeah, but I mean, is he starting with Buren?
No, we will start with Debbie the second time.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So, as you know, the part-time elected council members versus full-time city manager, there is a very clear line of demarcation between the two sets of people here. My question then is, what will be your strategy if you are elected to the city council to deal with the situation by providing, as a city council, policy guidance to the city manager, but at the same time not interfering with the day-to-day operations of the city manager?
We will start with Debbie.
So you want to know how I, as a council member, would provide policy guidance to a city manager without interfering with city business?
In day-to-day operations.
In day-to-day operations? Well, I think that one of the things that hasn't been happening is that the city is not functioning as an integrated unit. I think that the city staff are doing some things on direction of the city manager of the past. The council isn't necessarily being informed of some of the decisions that are being made. So the council needs all of the information of everything that's going on, so that they can be the ones that can make the policy decisions and make them in a way that represents and reflects what the citizens feel. And I think the only way to do that is to create more of an open forum between citizen voices, business voices, the council itself, to be more available to the public. And then those things run the other direction up to the city manager to research with staff to implement those policies. And there needs to be a focus that, on what is the benefit to Buren and its citizens and business in Buren? There has to be an emphasis on that, rather than an emphasis on other areas or, you know, adventures that they're using staff time and money on that don't have any direct benefit to the citizens and businesses of Buren.
Thank you, Debbie. Rose?
I am proud that the council and the staff have always worked together, the council, city manager, and the staff. Council is the policy-setting body. When an issue comes forward, whether it's from the staff or from the community, council listens, they talk to each other at council meetings. Seldom do we have chats on the phone among ourselves. It's all in public to discuss the merits of the issue and give the city manager direction if he then follows through with staff. I think that is a very good model. We have had council members with varying personalities, and sometimes personality is a very important factor in how you work together. I want a city manager that is collaborative, but listens well and understands each council member individually, but then can synthesize that together to understand what council as a whole is saying on any given issue.
Thank you, Rose. Nancy?
I think we have to start by being on the same page. I think the council and the city manager and the staff and the community need to have a shared vision of what it is we're trying to do. So that's sort of the first step. And if that's decided and agreed upon, then there can be some clarity on roles and responsibilities and what we need to do to get there. What are the intended outcomes of how we're going to accomplish that vision? And then we have to have some accountability and some performance measures. I mean, what is it that we expect the staff to do? Is the city manager capable of keeping the staff according to those accountability measures? So it's clear that we're moving in the same direction, but the roles and responsibilities among the different parties are defined, policy versus the management versus the carrying out the day-to-day activities by the staff.
Thank you, Nancy. Joan?
We're a city of a 20-year history. I started out in the planning commission in 1995 with the original commission. I've been on council for 12 years. I think it's easy to look from the outside in and describe the things that appear to be broken. I find it very difficult to imagine that folks who have not dealt directly with the city operations can criticize and say the council and the city manager do not have a relationship. I have never once in my 12 years made my decision on what the city manager or staff told me. That's just not the way this council works. We've had a functioning council for 10 years. The last two years has been very, I keep using the word challenging. I believe that the group of 20 people who come to the council every single meeting to bring a complaint to us that they don't like what we're doing is not representative of the entire population of 47,000. I wish we heard more from good folks, rather than the folks who think we're doing a bad job. So it's been a difficult time these last two years, and I feel that we need to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to Jack for the next question, and Rose will be the person who starts.
Do you believe that we should have additional police officers? And if so, and I know some action is taken recently on that, but if so, where is this money coming from, since we must pay directly to the Indian County Sheriff's Department for our contract?
I wish we had a tree that grew that money, but we don't. And so I believe we do need more officers. I've never doubted that. But we have to live within the constraints of our budget, just like anybody running a household does. Public safety is about 51% of that budget. So the way I would, the way forward to have more is now that we are out of the recession, is to grow our commercial tax base. Or to think about a measure that we put forth that was not well-received by a few people in the rough, and that was the kids and cops. We would go out to the community and say, we have a measure that we would fund more cops, and it would also provide monies for after-school tutoring and activities for students in our schools to keep them active and in safe places away from the streets, and then have the extra police. So one way or the other, we need to have more money for police officers. So either develop our commercial tax base more, or some kind of levy, if not kids and cops, then something else.
Thank you, Rose. Nancy?
I did a very interesting ride-along on Saturday night with the police department, one of our police officers, for several hours, to see what it was that they faced in evening. And I'd encourage any of you as citizens to think about doing it. It's absolutely fascinating. And had a really good discussion with the officers about what it takes in terms of servicing our community. And I think before we jump to saying we have to have more police officers, we need to understand sort of where it is we think we need those officers. What are the issues that we're facing? Are we really seeing a rise in crime that's different than elsewhere in the region? And so that may be sort of a survey of the community to say, what are our needs? Do you feel like you're not being served? Is the response time too slow? Are there issues that aren't being addressed by the police? There are four police officers that serve on each of the shifts, at least in the swing shift and the day shift. And as Rose said, we would have to find the resources, and that would mean building out the economic base to support those officers. But I think we need to know what that specific need is.
Thank you, Nancy. Joan?
Seattle has a levy that supports kids. It's called the education levy. It passes every time it comes forward. I think we, as a community, realize that the kids are our future, cops are necessary, but like Rose said, with 52% of our general fund budget goes for the current contract, and we have four officers, sometimes only two are on duty. So it's a very lean operation. We would like to see it better, but I think rather than trying to figure out how to increase the property tax, we'd like to support and increase kids and cops levy to do what we're all talking about. It's just absolutely critical to get kids off the streets, into after-school programs, into evening programs. And I think the cops see the value in doing these kind of programs and would be more than participatory in putting some of these things together. Thank you.
And Debbie?
As I've been outdoor billing, I've found that there are a number of issues that it may not just be policing. It could be nuisances, it could be lighting, it could be that some neighborhoods that really want to get together to have a neighborhood watch just want some support or some kind of structure in developing those kind of things for themselves. So there are other resources and things available too, to the city to utilize, to help put an influence in one area over another, or to change up what's being patrolled, to put more focus on some certain areas at some certain times when there seems to be more problems. Now with the transit center, we may have more influx of problems in our area. We may need more police, and I have that as a priority above all else. And I think communities and citizens want to feel safe in their homes and in their neighborhoods, say, don't want their cars broken into. That's their number-one priority. So maybe 60% of the budget needs to go to that. Thank you.
Rose, did you wish to use your first card?
Yes, I did. Thank you so much. A good program to take for you folks to keep an eye on is a program we've started this year, well, it will start in a couple of weeks at Highline High School. It was put together by the funding from the city, our police officer, that's an SRO there, and a nonprofit, I can't remember right now which nonprofit, but it is geared to tutoring kids that need extra help, as well as activities to keep the kids profitably occupied after school. The school identifies the kids that need this. So it's kind of a...
Leave out 20 seconds.
It's kind of a model.
Remind the purple card, you have 20 seconds to add to your previous comment. Arun? Arun, you will be our next question, and for this round, we'll start with Nancy.
This has to do with green economy. We live in an evergreen state. We have a governor who is considered a green governor. And the Burians, one of the Burians' vision is environmental stewardship and environmental sustainability. So my question is, if you are elected to the Burian City Council in November and start your work in January, what specific new activity or proposal will you put to the council in terms of green jobs and green economy in Burian?
That's a great question, Arun. And I am a strong believer in sustainability and the green economy, having a green economy. And I think Burian could do a lot in this regard. In terms of specifics, I mean, I do think we have the opportunity to create a more favorable business environment in Burian, and we should go after green businesses. We should think about what it means to sort of support energy efficiency, waste management, the way we manage stormwater runoff. I mean, there are a number of ways that as a community, we can incorporate sort of green practices in how we do business, what we expect businesses to do in our community, and what we expect citizens to do. Having, even having the transit center in Burian, though it brings problems, it creates a transportation hub and alternative ways to move around. And reducing emissions, and I know you know well that Burian used to be a member of one of the climate change cities, one of the climate change communities as part of Italy. And I think that's something we ought to consider again, is how do we demonstrate that as a community, we can be responsive, reduce emissions, pay attention to it, track them in a way that allows us to be greener.
Thank you, Nancy. Joan?
Many of you know that I've been working on the Seahurst Park seawall removal since 1993. It has been my passion in the community by removing almost a mile of hardened waterfront, the cement wall and the big rock piles that we had. We have put together the largest nearshore restoration project in Puget Sound. I was absolutely dedicated to making this happen. I'm so pleased. I was also one of the founders of the Environmental Science Center that's in the park that serves over 10,000 kids a year. So I'm strongly in the environmental community. I was also the one that insisted when City Hall, the library, and the condos, the existing town square condos in the park were put in place, that they meet lead standards. That's the sustainable area that everybody is reaching for. And I've done a lot of work with low-impact development. We're putting in a remarkable project on airport property to capture stormwater. So I've been dedicated for the time I've been in Burian since 1993, and I plan on keeping this work going as long as I'm around. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Debbie?
I have an idea for one specific plan, and that is to expand our public market to make it on Sunday, to add a lot more local vendors and local growers, people that are crafters that are local. And when we shop locally, we eat locally, we reduce a huge environmental footprint that we have of shipping and global freight movement. So that's just one way. It's a small way, but it can make a big difference for a community to have an expanded market, have a lot more choices, have a lot more local vendors participating. And it not only reduces shipping and reduces a big environmental impact on the earth, it also helps those local people to survive and to flourish with their local businesses or their local craft or whatever they're growing. So it's a great way to help all of ourselves and to help our environment as well.
Thank you, Debbie. Rose?
I love the eat locally movement as part of the HCC, Highline Communities Coalition that I started, and I totally support that. We are starting on discussions of a program in the, in the Nera Northeast area to handle stormwater in a new environmentally safe way that will clean the water, make it cool for it to enter the streams and make a better habitat for fish. I would like, part of that will include rain gardens, and I would love to have more of that means of handling our stormwater rather than putting everything in a pipe and letting it run up to the sound. If we infiltrate that into our ground, we will have a better ecosystem here for all of our natural environment. So we have adopted low-impact development standards now, and I think we need a really vigorous program to help our citizens understand the value, so we support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. We'll go to Jack for the next question, and Joan will start with the answers.
An event in the University District today spotlights some more of what we're talking about stormwater and management and how to protect our critical areas and our businesses. What steps are needed quickly to get this under control, or do you even think there's a problem?
Are you asking me specifically about stormwater and surface water runoff?
I believe you're, does she start?
Yes, she does. He's asking that question of everyone.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understand the question. Probably the biggest barrier to getting stormwater control and management in place is the fact that people don't want to pay for it. You all now are paying a surface water management fee that clearly covers all the regulations that are in place. But to do something beyond that, the rain gardens and the bioswales and all the things that everyone needs, it isn't just a city problem to control stormwater. It's a community problem. The more we can do as a city to educate, to describe, to implement ways that everybody can plant their property with the appropriate plants that will do what needs to be done to get rid of concrete and hardened surfaces will improve the city immeasurably. So it's one of these community activities that we come together, work through education programs to get at the solution.
Thank you, Joan. Debbie?
I think we have some major stormwater problems in the city, and they've been neglected for a really long time. And one of those problems was directing a lot of stormwater flow down into the, into park areas. The cause of washing out of the tree at Eagle Landing Park. Those kind of things that have been left and left to be antiquated and not updated for so long are causing people's properties to flood during storm events. Some people have been contacting the city over a course of years and have had no response at all. These are people that have to run some pumps in their basement, and not just one of them, but multiple pumps to keep their basement and their homes from flooding during stormwater events. So we're talking about building stormwater facilities over at Nera, which is a port facility. It's port property. But yet Burian wants to spend $2 million to buy that property when we could be using it to upgrade the system that isn't working in areas of the city that are constantly flooding. I just don't understand it, but thank you.
Rose?
The Nera project that Debbie referenced is partly owned by the Port of Seattle with funds they have, with funds that they got from the FAA, as well as some that is Burian own. So it's a complex thing. The idea is, no matter who owns the property, to put that property back into commercial use so that we get taxes from that. The stormwater development, I referenced that earlier, is a new attempt, a very modern attempt at addressing stormwater through infiltration. If we do projects like this around our city, on the streets and where you live, where maybe today you have a ditch and it's just open, or it's piped away in other areas, if we were to build swales, rain gardens, that sort of thing in front of your house, it actually increases your property value while it is a better system and a better environmental approach to protecting our area with the management of stormwater. We're going to need funding. It's like the police officers, we need money.
Thank you, Rose. Nancy?
So if I understand the question, it's about specifically what would we do about stormwater management? And I think we've heard several responses around sort of the infrastructure and the challenges of paying for the infrastructure. I think another component of it is about education and helping people understand what goes into stormwater that contributes to the problems. It's not just the quantity of water, which is an issue, and climate change may contribute to that with higher intensity storms, and we need the infrastructure and have to figure out how to pay for it. But it's also what goes into the water. So when you put fertilizers in your yard or you change your oil in the street and you let the oil run down the drain, that is bad for, in terms of stormwater runoff, that's the quality of the water that's causing a great deal of harm, contributing to things like harmful algal blooms that we see happening in Lake Burian at times, partly because of the stormwater runoff. So I think part of that is an education process of helping citizens understand what they can do, both from the, you know, keep it out, as well as the infrastructure that Rose was talking about, having swales, having rain gardens, having less impermeable surface in your yard.
Thank you, Nancy. Joan, did you wish to use a purple card?
Yes.
I'll remind you, that, remind all the candidates that you are allowed 20 extra seconds when you utilize your purple card.
One needs to understand what happens when rainwater hits impermeable surfaces. It goes into the ground. The way the geology is layered here, if it hits a clay layer, it's going to express itself. And it isn't the responsibility of the city to go on private property to correct stormwater futures.
Thank you, Joan. And now we will go to Arun. Oh, man. I had little, thank you, little check marks to keep track, and I get to the last one and Debbie's going to go. But Arun, you have to ask the question first. I hope you got a point or two.
It looks like a good system here. I needed color code.
Okay. The question has to do with the two-year budget cycle for the city of Burian. In order to balance the budget, we need increased revenues and decreased expenditures. Most of the time, the tendency is to reduce expenditure, which is fine. But what I'm asking is what specific, unique revenue-increasing approaches each of you have that you think, without increasing taxes, but things like user fees or service fees can be added in order to balance the budget, because there is a limit to how much expenses you can reduce?
Well, first of all, I don't think that our businesses in Burian can handle any more taxes or fees put on them. We want to draw business. We don't want to chase more away. So that's not an option. Homeowners have been stressed by the recession. I don't think they're ready for a tax increase to help pay for the services and the needs that we're talking about. So those, those two opportunities to increase revenue are really not the best option. Increasing business and, and increasing our sales tax revenues for new business is probably the best option that we have. The way to attract business is to streamline the process for a new business to open. Take away some of these or reduce some of the fees. There's, there's parking impact fees, permit fees, all kinds of paperwork and regulatory problems that businesses face when they open up. They aren't really free and don't really feel very able to do things that they want to do to, to open up and advertise. So I think that we need to streamline the process for business to come to Burian and to stay in Burian, and that will help our revenue source, our best option for revenue sources, without hurting the rest of our economy.
Thank you, Debbie. Rose?
Tomorrow night, you are all invited to come to Burian City Hall for our first public meeting, our first meeting period on our new economic study, Thursday night. Yes. I'm sorry. Thank you, Nancy. Thursday night, I would like to see you all there. One of the things we'll be looking at is impediments to, to business. We've never done this as a council, so it will be our first blush. And it will be an ongoing study for a few months until we determine what we need to do. We need to attract those new businesses because I agree, we cannot tax our current businesses more. We have refrained from taxing our homeowners more. So how do we then do things that we need to do? We attract new businesses so our economy grows, like the garden in our backyard, and we have more money for everything.
Thank you, Rose. Nancy?
I think we, we have a lot of agreement on this one, that sort of creating economic development is really the engine that will drive having a more robust budget in the city. I think there's some minor things, and I know the council talked about this recently, about pet licenses and trying to ensure that sort of all the revenues that it's possible to collect can be collected, because some significant percentage of pets aren't actually paying the license fees. But I do think economic development is the driver. And we may all be familiar with Des Moines recently secured a hotel, $45 million hotel in Des Moines, based on reaching out. And I think this is what we need to do more aggressively, is we've got to go outside of sort of the box that we typically stay in, reach out internationally, reach out regionally, reach out nationally, to think about how do we create the environment here? We have an incredible location. We have so many amenities, so many assets, and we don't do a very good job of marketing those to say, this is a great place to do business, and that would help what we have to work with in terms of a budget.
Thank you, Nancy. Joan?
The city of Burian has a very stable budget. It has been stable through the Great Recession. We have always been able to manage our budget to provide services. It used to be, a few years ago, when we needed a budget revenue increase, we looked to the federal government. That money is gone. We used to lobby our state legislators to get money for various projects. The parking garage at the library was state money that we used. That's gone. So here we are, looking at property tax for revenue, increased fees, and all the things that people say to no new taxes. I look at the situation in the school district and just feel so sad for our kids. So if we're only looking to new business, that puts a burden on folks coming to town. The thing I worry about when Debbie talks about decreasing permit fees on new business, permit fees are one of the ways we get revenue into our budget. The construction and sales tax brings in revenue. New businesses bring in revenue. I'm perfectly happy to have them come to town, but they're going to have to contribute to our well-being, and by reducing permit fees, that's not in anybody's best interest.
Thank you, Joan. At this point, we are going to take questions from the audience. Oh, pick me, pick me. I feel like one of my overachieving students. No extra credit. I'd be surprised. And what we are going to... Nancy, who did we leave off with? Okay, thanks. Oh, my gosh, got to count to seven after eight o'clock tonight. So we will start with Rose and continue our rolling pattern. And again, they have 75 seconds for, to answer the question. I choose you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Sachin, and I'm recently new to Burian.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Sachin, and I'm recently new to Burien. Unfortunately, I haven't had the best experiences in the little over a year that we've been here, and so I'm not sure if we're gonna make it for another year or so. But I have noticed a common theme, an underlying theme, and I think it can be resolved if we hold, make city management more accountable to their actions and how they work with businesses and the community. So my question to you is, what specific actions will you take to regulate the actions of the city management and ensure accountability and transparency while in good faith, while enforcing city management actions, but they're in good faith on behalf of the citizens of Burien? So I'm just putting that at the forefront.
So you're asking what I would do?
Specifically, how are you gonna hold city management accountable so that they aren't acting on the citizens, the citizens' interests versus their own best interests?
I'm, thank you. I'm not aware of your specific instance, but I think by and large, staff works very, very hard to serve the citizens well.
How?
It is up to council to listen very carefully to people and to ask questions of staff about the particulars that are brought to us, so that we can hold them responsible. You mentioned economic in your question, and I believe we have an understaffed economic development office, and I don't know if your problem was with the business. But I think we have a one-person economic development department. For all of the things that we're asking, to attract business, to build new stuff, to keep track of local businesses and concerns, that's a lot to ask of one person. But I think we, to move forward better, we need to consider one more staff in that department. And I hope that addresses.
Thank you, Rose. Nancy?
As I've been outdoor-belling, I've heard mixed messages. I've heard people say, and I've visited many small businesses, and I've heard some of them say, we went through the process and it was great. I've heard others say, it was a nightmare, and we didn't end up actually locating in Burien. And again, I don't know if it's businesses or if it's planning department building a house, or exactly what it is. But I do think we need more accountability. I agree with you. And I think having some mechanism by which citizens can say, you know, their complaints, concerns, compliments, sort of opportunities to express what the experience has been, to do sort of a reaction after you've gone through a permit or you've been turned down, what worked, what didn't, and then bring that. The city manager should be very aware of that, and he should be holding the staff that, he or she should be holding the staff that works for him under, accountable for the performance. We need, I think, to have a city that's seen as being very welcoming, responsive, encouraging, as opposed to in any way antagonistic toward citizens. And I have heard complaints in both directions, so.
Joan?
The accountability that we all require is through the permit and regulatory process. A lot of people do come to the planning department and ask for waivers. It's up to the city staff to be accountable to the appropriate rules and regulations, which seem very onerous, but they're not only city codes, but they're state and federal requirements. So yes, let's hold the planning department accountable, but I think what we need to do is form a stronger business development conversation with Discover Burien, with the business partnership, with folks in the community who have an interest in business. The BEDP is talking about putting together a mentoring program as every new business comes to town, that they're mentored and counseled by business owners. I think we need more of an outreach and quit saying, well, the reason why things are so bad, it's due to the city manager and the planning department. And I think this is a broader conversation that we need to start.
Debbie?
So I think I'm sitting up here just for maybe some of the reasons of what's behind what you're talking about, because I've had nothing but trouble in getting information requests filled. I don't even know that I don't have it all, because I don't know what I'm missing, because I don't have it all. I have to find out from somebody else that I don't have it all, and then I have to go back and try and get the rest of it. And it's very frustrating as a citizen to adult of the city over these past few years, that I've been really active, trying to get my voice heard, trying to get letters through, trying to get information out. Even on my candidacy, the city left my name off their newsletter. I was the only one left off, but I was left off nonetheless. So there are mistakes being made, there are things being overlooked, there are people that are being treated differently than other people. Some people are getting clear passes, other people are getting run through the wringer. So these things are part of transparency, fairness, honesty, and integrity. That is what my flyer is about, that's what I feel we need desperately. Those are some of the qualities I'd like to see in a new manager, that things are run in a way that people feel happy and confident with, not worried and wondering what's going on behind the scenes, why am I being treated this way, which is how I've felt for the last few years. So again, that's why I'm up here, running, to try to get these things changed.
Thank you, Debbie. Other questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am. And we will start with Nancy.
Hi, my name is Justine Edgware, and I live in Burien here. And the city manager's style in the last six to seven years has been to essentially reduce the effectiveness of the advisory boards, and to have them meet less, have them meet more infrequently, and have less decisions dropped up to them. As a result of that, that has reduced the citizen voice that should be coming to the council, and the citizen voice that should be interfacing with the council. What will you do to improve that conversation with citizens?
Thanks for that question, Justine. And I don't know if you've heard in my opening comments, the idea of an inclusive community is very much one of the platforms that I'm running on. I don't think we're a community without engagement, and it is sad to see how few of the 20 people who come to city council meetings and speak. I think the advisory committees have been ignored. I think there's a lot of active citizens who care a great deal about the community. I think we need a combination of reinvigorating those advisory committees, listening to them, having feedback direct to the council on a regular basis. This is what the Arts Commission is thinking about, this is what the BEDP has been working on, me hearing the recommendations. I also think we need to have some more public meetings. I think we have to have much more dialogue and exchange on what we want Burien to be. And I also think somehow maybe encouraging neighborhoods, in my, going on a block watch night and visiting a number of the block watch meetings that were taking place, just seeing people integrate in their neighborhoods, meet each other, talk to each other, and get engaged, and be able to potentially define what some of their concerns are and bring those back to council. So not just the advisory committees, but do it on a community basis, neighborhood by neighborhood as well.
Thank you, Nancy. Joan?
I strongly believe it's incumbent on the Burien citizens to provide input. I agree wholeheartedly with Nancy. I love block watch. I find out more things going on in my neighborhood than at any time of the year. Even dog walking, it's a way to get the neighborhood engaged. I've consistently heard that the advisory boards aren't working. They are a challenge, but unless you've sat in an Arts Commission board meeting or a Parks Board meeting and find out how hard these folks work, how dedicated they are to making things better for Burien, I think it's very incumbent on each citizen to participate in a way that they might feel their voice will be heard. I think going to the advisory boards, seeing the hard, hard work they all do, really is incumbent on every one of us to understand the process.
Thank you, Joan. Debbie?
I, I'm aware that for many years, citizens have been begging the city for more of an open process that was more inclusive of these different groups, commissions, and city staff. Now they're talking about doing this like it's something that they've been working on for a long time. Well, this is something that should have been going on all along, and it was actually dissolved and destroyed. There's been a disconnect between the economic development partnership. Now there's more of a disconnect being created between the Arts Commission and the council and the staff, the citizens, the city. They should be working together with all of these different groups and these different voices. It should have been going on all along, now it'd be something new that's just starting up. That is how a city runs well. I was talking to the state auditor not too long ago about an issue with Burien that I was looking into a little bit, and they said Bellevue runs so well, their council meets and has an open forum with citizens and these various groups regularly, so they are constantly hearing what the needs and concerns are, business, economic development, the arts and culture in their town. So that's really something that we need, and we could have had it all along.
Thank you, Debbie. Rose?
Thank you. We do have four advisory boards today. We have Parks, Arts, Planning, and our Business Economic Development Partnership. There was a time in the past that council members, each one would choose to attend this one or that one depending on their schedules. And it wasn't that we attended every single solitary one, it was just checking in now and then to see how things were going. At some point, we stopped doing that because we felt like maybe we were intruding on their process, and I think a disconnect, communication disconnect began to develop. I have been going to BEDP regularly, I'm in contact with the Arts Commission, and will pick up the other two boards as the, I mean, which I go to when there's something that I specialize in over here, as well as the Parks. I also want to add in there, as I said before, a young, a youth council, young 20-somethings to 40s, so that we hear their voice also.
Thank you, Rose. Questions from the audience? Because I've got a list here, another question.
Want to ask one? No.
The gentleman in the front.
I am. Want to make sure the mic's working?
Oh.
My question is, could you name a political role model that you admire from any time in history?
And we are starting with Joan.
Vivian Matthews and Dottie Harper. The two women that essentially founded the Highline, what was it, the Highline District Commission in Rhode, do you remember what Vivian and Dottie put together?
Highline district.
Yes.
Yeah.
Those two women, single-handedly brought the community together in a way that hasn't happened since they have left us in various capacities. Those are my role models. The one, the two people who did the most for the Burien community.
Debbie?
Well, I just recently read a book about JFK, and I like that he stood up to the, on the Cuban Missile Crisis, and I think that was very brave and very bold and pretty dangerous and kind of scary. So I admire his guts and his gumption to do that, and I think it was a very terrifying time in history that I happened to be alive for and remember seeing on the news. So I know my whole family was afraid, and I'm glad that it worked out the way it did. I admire that kind of guts.
Rose?
I have always admired King County Council member Julia Patterson, who I think most of you probably know. She started out as a T-TAC city council member, went to the legislature as a representative of this area, then on to the senate, and then to King County Council. All through her career, she was very collaborative, listened so well, was always there for the people, and I just think that the service she rendered to our community as well as to the whole state was really wonderful. She was just so, not while she's still here, but she's retiring, she's just so approachable. I envy her that relaxed manner, because I get a little tense sometimes, you know? She doesn't seem to do that.
Nancy?
Well, I have two. When I first started my career, it was in state government in California, and I worked under Jerry Brown, Governor Jerry Brown, then Governor Jerry Brown, who is now Governor Jerry Brown. And it was a very creative, key at the time, I was talking about California having a satellite of its own and so on, but it was a very creative time in state government in terms of encouraging people to think about what was possible. But I also have a lot of respect for Ron Sims, sort of more closer to home, just again, partly because of his style, his personal commitment to what King County could be as King County Executive, and he went on to serve at the federal levels.
Yes. So I think I can just yell this out.
Give it a try.
Since 2004, the citizens of Burien have been promised a recreational community center. And Burien has taken a lot of bird walks and done a lot of other things, and that center has not come to be. The lands that we have over in Dottie Harper Park, that we over have over in the community center, now the old community center, are all being used ineffectively. They are clearly not serving our students at the end of the school day. They gather in the library, and the programs are pretty much run by the King County library system. When I go over frequently to the community center, the community center is empty when the students should be there. I would like to know how you plan to revitalize and create a good recreation community program for citizens, the ones that have been promised since 2004, and a good program for our children and every other, every other person who needs to benefit from the use of that. Okay? Again, that's a promise that was made in 2004, and nothing has materialized that.
We will start with Debbie.
I wanted to start with Joan, so I did hear what happened when the promise was made, because she was here then, and I wasn't, but I do think...
I certainly plan to talk about the process.
It's Debbie's turn. Okay. I have kids that have gone through school, and I've taken them out of the area for recreational programs. Both of my sons were in rec basketball and rec baseball, and we didn't have any of that that we could utilize here in Burien. So we went down to the Tukwila Community Center, which is a beautiful facility with rooms for wedding receptions and meeting rooms, and beautiful basketball courts and racquetball courts, and it's open all the time, and they welcome everybody. Why can't we have something like that? Well, it takes a lot of money, and I think it would take a lot of levy. I think that the taxpayers would have to pay for it. But, you know, as far as the need, we really need something, and we need, we need it for our youth as well as all ages, our seniors. It would be great to have. Maybe economic development can help drive some of that financial need that's there.
Thank you, Debbie. Rose?
I was here. I don't know if that's good or bad, but I was here. And we did have a really great plan that was very expensive. And we had this little thing called a recession, and so it was totally not a good time to go out for a bond. And our senior center, which was located over, and I can't remember the name of the school, over on 100 over on 136th and M-Bone. It began to have problems with water, and so we had to close that dam. And we moved those programs into the old library because that had just become available. So now I think that original plan that we had, that was very big and inclusive of all ages, I'm not sure that's the same plan we need to follow today. I think the senior programs are working well. Where they are, there are rooms to rent. What we need, I believe, is a recreation center, complete with a swimming pool and the warm water pool that Highline Medical wanted for therapy that they would help pay for. So I think we need to bring it back and discuss it as a community.
I don't know exactly what happened, Justine, but what I've seen over the last few years is a lot of energy directed at other issues that sort of negated our ability to think proactively about what the community really needed. And so to me, we've got to revisit that. What do we need? Is it the vision that we had previously? Will that work? Is it something else? And how do we bring in the potential participants in it? The kids, the youth, the seniors. I love the idea of having some kind of a community center that involves sort of all ages as a way to mingle and interact. I think we should figure out, what did it take, Tukwila? How is it that Tukwila got such a great community center? And what, how did they make that work? Was it purely the fact that they just do have a more solid economic base? Or is it that they created some kind of public-private partnership? I think this community could do more with public-private partnerships as sort of incentive for economic growth and at the same time, sort of community benefit.
Thank you Nancy. Joan?
Tukwila is one of the best-funded cities in King County. When you look at the per capita rate, their rate per person paying into revenue in the city is $1,500 per person. Ours is about $450. The program that we put together was $35 million. We finished the study probably in 2007. Had a very robust discussion, could we do a bond measure? We looked at what it would cost individual homeowners, and it was a property tax bond. It was about $160 per year. We looked at the failing economy and said, can we go out for a bond measure? When we're asking each property owner to contribute $160, the city said, no, it's not the time. We used the library because the King County library traded the property for where they are now economically. It didn't cost the city very much, and we got a good deal. If we're willing to put a levy on the ballot for $35 million, we would go forward in a heartbeat. So it's a matter of economics and the tax structure of the city of Burian.
Thank you Joan. Question? Jack?
My name is Chuck Rangel. I live in Burian, just a couple blocks away from here, actually. My question is something that I just developed after listening to some of the responses by the panel. And it was a little bit of unnerving responses, and that's what's forced me compelled to ask these questions. One question. I've heard it said from the respondents up there that we have maybe 20 people keep coming to the city council meetings, and that they would like to hear more from the city, from other people. And yet today, we're saying, from the same respondents, that you should attend the advisory board meetings. And I'm wondering, well, if you're not going to be listening to that one, what makes you going to be listening to the other? The other question that the respondent I heard was in regard to the stormwater. And the response was, we do not have the authority to go on private property to fix stormwater problems. Well, my understanding is that it's a school district's responsibility for education of the students. So, you know, tutoring, mentoring of the like. I've got no problems with that. I'm tutoring myself. But what is that the responsibility of the city? So my question to the panel is, why is your opinion of what should be done more important than any one of the citizens out here who are attorneys, doctors, very fine educators, very well-educated educators? Why is your opinion any better?
Rose?
I'm just the moderator.
Our opinion isn't any more important than anybody else's opinion that at the end of the day, we live under the same whatever we pass that everybody else lives under, or whatever we don't pass that everybody lives under. So I don't believe that we are very important people. We are people charged with making decisions after we listen and study issues. And sometimes we do study issues and learn a little bit more about it than other people that are busy with other things. As far as the education, I want to point out that education is economic development. In order to attract people to this community, we need to improve the education system. So the city has to be concerned about it to be a partner and work with the schools to do, to create as strong an education system, complete with after-school activities, so that we attract those businesses that will say, this will be a good place to build my business, and my employees will benefit by living here. If we don't do something with our education system, I think Burian will move forward much more slowly.
Nancy?
Chuck, I'm not totally sure I understand your question, but I think it's about engagement, and it's about how we take advantage of the talent that's in the community, which I agree. I think we have an incredibly talented and diverse community that we haven't figured out how to engage in the most productive ways, whether that's young people, whether that's a variety of ethnicities, whether it's retired business folks that ran various businesses and are now lounging and laying back, and we need them. They can be helpful in terms of moving our community forward. So I don't have the answers of what the optimal ways are to engage them. I don't think it's necessarily having council members go to advisory committees. I think having robust advisory committees with sort of clear mandates for what is expected of them, and giving them the opportunity to work on those things, come back to council, talk about it, giving citizens the opportunity to sit in council meetings, hear those interactions, react to them themselves, have more of an exchange as opposed to a one-way dialogue. So I'm very proactive in terms of more opportunities for engagement and figuring out what, how people want to do that.
Thank you Nancy. Joan?
Very good answer.
Yes, it is.
I want to put this conversation back on the Burian community. We talk about holding public meetings. We're happy to hold public meetings. I don't know how many public meetings we had when we decided the Shoreline Master Plan, but there were more meetings than I cared to attend. I think we're good at it. But I would like to see more ad hoc groups form who hold their own public meetings. We're perfectly happy at any opportunity to be invited, to sit, to listen, to speak. Maureen's in the audience. She's got the Walk and Talk Program. She invented entirely by herself, and she has a contingent of folks who talk about Burian. She also did the art project. There's several people in town who have done amazing things that they get together and talk. I would like to see more of that. The community taking responsibility instead of looking to the city and telling us what we're doing wrong. And that's what I see in a lot of council, is folks standing up and telling us what a terrible job we're doing. It's discouraging, but we listen, and we sit there, and we try to do the very best job we can do.
Debbie?
I think to address Chuck's question, I'm one of those 20 people that I was referred to earlier that go to those council meetings regularly. I don't always criticize, sometimes I'm just concerned. One of the things that I have been concerned about is the annexation of Area Y. And I brought information to the council after looking at all the reports on this particular issue. And the council was not receptive to what I had to say. So I went to the boundary review board hearings and made the same presentations. They were also not receptive. And then the community rejected the proposal two to one. So in the meanwhile, we spent a lot of money, spent a lot of time and staff, time and energy, working on this proposal. You know, half a million dollars later, it's all dead in the water. And I had actually, you know, spent a lot of my own personal time to work on this and to make a presentation that I thought was a very good one. And it had facts, it had figures, and I used their own reports to come up with my conclusions. So if that's what's considered negative, I don't really understand that. I would hope that citizens want to be a part of their city, to work within the city and say what they think is important and what directions they'd like to see the city go, and not be called out as one of those bad people who keeps bothering the council with-
Thank you Debbie. Rose, you would like to use your second purple card?
Yes, my last one. And that is because we have positive energy and negative energy. Positive energy was a bunch of young kids that came to city council and said, golly, we'd like to have a skate park. Today, we have a skate park with their help. The very same model with the dog park. They came very positively and said, we have a need, we would like to help. And we are, but we don't have it. We're almost there for the dog park.
We're coming to the end of our allotted time together. Justine, we're at the end.
It's okay. I thought you said-
You can ask them later. You can contact them as interested citizens. Absolutely. But I have an agenda that Mark prepared that tells me that at this moment, I'm supposed to move us toward our closing statements. And I do remember that I am supposed to start from Nancy and roll it back the opposite direction. Again, closing statement, 75 seconds. Ready, set, go.
Let's see if I can do this. I have my David Letterman Top 10 List of Reasons to Vote for me. So, number 10, I work very hard. I have a lot of energy. I don't give up. Number nine, I researched, digged, understand options before I make decisions. I'm an information geek. I like to learn. Number eight, I understand policymaking. I've worked in public agencies or with them for nearly 35 years. I have a strong science background, and I'm an art geek. In my spare time, it's my own personal creative outlet. So I'm experienced. I understand multidisciplinary activities and why we need to think across disciplines. I have integrity and a strong set of ethics about fairness and democracy. I listen, and I'm able to respect and see multiple viewpoints and find common ground. I have a good imagination and see tremendous potential for Burian. I couple my, number four, sorry, I lost the numbers there. I couple my imagination with the courage to act as though another reality is possible. Number three, I've examined other communities across the US and the world and bring that insight to Burian. Number two, I care deeply about the future of Burian. And number one, I'd be honored to have your vote and will give my all to you as a council member.
I would ask for your vote. I have been on council for a while. I understand that. I was part of the original visioning process and followed with being on the comprehensive plan. We have, I've been very proud that every council that has sat has moved the vision forward steadily as they were able in their term. That vision is a small-town community where people feel safe to walk around their community. I feel that that is what we have in our downtown. I know that we need to work on that more in our neighborhoods. I am the only person that has ever served on council east of Fort Southwest. That is a part of the community that is largely not, not local. They sit quietly and hope for a lot of things, like sidewalks in their neighborhoods, broken sidewalks that are very dangerous to be fixed and for parks over there. So to bring equity to folks, I ask for your vote for that. Thank you.
Rose? Debbie?
My goals for Burian are a safe and economically vibrant city with a small-town atmosphere, a fiscally responsible, effective, and transparent government, a place where families and businesses desire to locate and remain, a city that is citizen-friendly, where business and neighborhood voices are listened to with respect, and whose needs and ideas are reflected in government decisions. What I bring to the council is 35 years of business experience in financial management, accounting, and customer service. I have been a community and schools volunteer for 25 years. I'm the vice president and co-founder of a national environmental organization. I would really appreciate your vote, and I thank you for your time.
I moved back to Burian in 1993. I raised my kids, went to federal way, hated every minute of it, and came back to Burian. My commitment when I bought my house in 1993 was to be a community volunteer. I have done that from day one. I'm very proud of the work I did with the Lake Burian Park and the arches that we put together as volunteer group. We were the first group that started the Burian Garden Tour years and years ago. I pride myself on my community activism and will continue that whether I'm on council or not. One attribute that I bring strongly to the Burian City Council is I'm an engineer. I worked with City of Seattle, closed Ken Highlands Landville for those of you old time who know what I'm talking about. I worked at Boeing as an environmental engineer until I was elected to council in 2002. I have a wide understanding of contracts administration and what it takes to run an organization of 75 dedicated professionals and 47,000 advisors who care about the city of Burian. I would appreciate your vote. I really do want another four years on council. Thank you.
Thank you Joan.
Thank you candidates. I admire your willingness to serve the public in a public office. It takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there. And I appreciate that you were willing to share what it is you'd like to do for the great city of Burian. I like Burian. Anyway, on behalf of the B-Town Blog, I thank you all for coming this evening and sharing your passion for the city of Burian, and be careful out there. It's nighttime.